Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting, November 25th. Mr. Clerk, we see that we have quorum for the night. Is there anybody here who wants to declare a conflict of interest? Well, it's the only item on the agenda, the budget and the motions. I don't see anything, so thank you. I just simply need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Moved by Deputy Mayor, called it, called it, seconded by Janis Cormier. All those favors say aye, second, contra madi nay. Motion carried. In terms of our budget deliberations, we're continuing where we stopped last night, last week. However, we were kind of wondering where we actually got to, Mr. CAO. I'll give you a bit of a recap here in terms of where we've gotten to and what remains to be done. And then I will give, pass the mic to the Finance Director. So we were, it's item six, operational budget. There are a few files to consider within that. It's item six and down in the general operating budget. We're also going to, to go over the, present the option that we will be offering to adopt a budget. There'll also be the capital budget. And I've added also, Minor Hockey, we added this today. Minor Hockey, there was a discussion around the grant that Minor Hog had requested, so we'll have a discussion on that front today within the budget. So that's the documents that we were able to acquire. So before I start, are there any questions? Not as such. So Madame Finance Director, uh, did, Mr., your worship, yeah, go ahead, Madame Finance Director. I have something. We were on, there's one line that I hadn't explained. I hadn't put in any comments. I didn't want to give you some false information. It's... It was fifty, a gap of fifty-seven thousand. It's under 2.7.1.9.9. Other recreational services. .9.9. There was a gap between the 2025 and 2012 budget of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. That gap, there's a fifty thousand. There was a, we went to, in, 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 put a dome for the festival Home Art. I will allow Danny Padare to explain why that expense is there. Good evening, your worship and members of the council. I just want to present this year in terms of the Home Art Festival, the 2025 edition. We are proposing an increase to the budget of fifty thousand dollars. There was always twenty, twenty-five thousand for the budget. We're proposing that we bring it up to fifty thousand. It would allow to create an innovative and spectacular project. This additional budget will allow us to put in an immersive dome that where you could have up to four hundred guests. It's a interactive space, would be not only a unique attraction, but also a place where we could have a version, a reinvented version of the Art Love event. That big dome would be within Park Pascal Poiret during the Home Art Festival. That dome, there was a lot of technical elements in that dome. There are all sorts of images within the dome. We can certainly create many types of programming. There's of course Art Love that we're developing right now. We want to reinvent it, we want to develop it. It actually, it's already operating and very well. We want to bring it to its schools. We want to have it be a partnership and bring it throughout the province. And there'll be a contest throughout the province and then the finals will be in the dome. So the total operating budget for 2025 that we're proposing would be around two hundred odd thousand dollars. So the municipal contribution would be close to seventy-five thousand. It's a festival that was mostly free to the population in terms of the, our goal with tourism is to increase visibility and programming so it could be, can become an economic engine. So for all those reasons, we're proposing this with, as part of our budget for tourism to, that this increase would be an added expense. Thank you. Is there a question, Councilor Janis Cormier?
Thank you, Danny. I fully agree with increasing that budget. Home Art Festival is, it's a real community festival. It's a festival for the citizens of our regions, not, not really, not tourists. People really appreciate that festival. It is for the community and its citizens. Congratulations, I'm entirely in agreement. If we need to take some money out from somewhere else, I would be ready to consider that. Up to date, it's within, it's within the budget that we have presented. It's a balanced budget according to Carol.
Great. Uh, Councilor Patricia Burchavelli, thank you, your worship. I just want to be sure that it's coming from the town. It's not Home Art that made this request for an extra fifty thousand. No. As you're aware, the Home Art Festival is in partnership with us for the Home Art Festival. They didn't make this request. We asked that they increase the budget so that we can offer a wider range of products to the community during that festival. We saw this dome, it's quite unique and we think it could really capture people's imagination so that they might come to see what's going on. I really think it's great. It's a great idea. I don't remember what anniversary is it for Home Art? It'll be our fifth. If we, we want to get ready, I think it's a festival in the time it happens, it's at the end of the season. It's a festival, I think it has a lot of potential. It's a beautiful product that we offer to the community. I think there are people who come from away to take a look at that product. It's as part of the Art Love tour. I think it's going to really lead to great economic benefits. Thank you, it's great. Madame Deputy Mayor, thank you, your worship. Unlike Janice and the others, I agree with it. I don't want to come back to the technical aspects. That's not for the meeting night. Will it be a dome that's able to be set up and, 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 put up and taken down again? Well, yes, certainly, it's a, we're going to be renting a dome as a company. They come set it up for us and they operate it. Technically for, there's a sound system, a light system, the, the whole package comes with it. Once they're done, it leaves the park. It belongs to us, but it comes out of the park. It's a rental. We're not buying it, we're not buying the dome, it's a rental. Okay? I hadn't understood that, that's okay, I understood that. So it's a rental, a year, every year for the same amount. We'll continue with that dome, yes. It doesn't belong to us. Well, I told myself we might be asked by everybody to, to borrow it and then our employees who have, are somewhat overwhelmed already. I think it's a great idea as well. I'm, I'm actually pleased to hear that it's a rental and not something that we own. Great. So that was the line that I hadn't explained last week. So next it would be, uh, debt servicing in terms of financial services or debt servicing? It is next page. The other items we saw last week already, they had already been explained last week. Continue, Carol. So debt servicing, the gap. I don't have much, many things to explain. It's the gap according to the debentures and long-term debentures. It's the payments that we'll have to do in 2025. So after, it would be transfers to our own reserves. We have created a document. Maybe you can put it up, Sivat? The document for General Capital and Special Projects from the council. This is a document from today. Yeah, that's the one. It's the right one. We'll come back to it. The one I'm showing, that's the chart that summarizes many amounts. And I, I've categorized them based on recreation, transportation, council projects and new investments. In terms of recreation, I'm indicating what we put in the 2025 budget. There's a five hundred thousand for the Four Seasons Park, three hundred fifty thousand for the Rotary Park and three hundred thousand for the Recreation Centre. Certainly, if you see, it creates a gap in relation to 2024 budget. But my intention was to show to you what we were projecting for the 2025 budget. In terms of transportation, there's engineering amounts. It's equivalent for the 2024 budget. The reserve of two hundred and five thousand. It's in order to balance the budget. It's an amount, it's an amount. We can do what we want with it. It's just to balance the budget. Ultimately, you have to come to net zero, that's my net zero. So we have a, we can play, there's a, we can play with two hundred thousand dollars. In terms of the council, we put in three hundred thousand instead of three hundred fifty thousand. It's according to the projects that you, as a council, in terms of the Green Strategy, we kept the same amount. Tourism displays the same thing. Put a hundred thousand dollars for developing, for the development strategy for the town. I chose Cheyac, it comes back. It's been there for a few years. And the downtown project for forty thousand. And the downtown project increased a bit. It was to put in picnic tables on a platform in the Park Pascal Poiret. In terms of new investments, we put in five hundred thousand for phase two of Bro Bridge, the reconstruction, the construction and the extension of Bro Bridge up to O'Wye. That basically covers the amounts that we wanted to set aside for special town projects. As we discussed with the various directors, that's what they really needed. Great. Are there any questions, Councilor Joao de Pre? Your worship, a question for Carol and then a question for Eve. Under section for cultural services, the historic site. I saw there was a amount of last year of twenty-six thousand, thirty thousand this year. Is this for the house on Pascal Poiret, Park Pascal Poiret? Item is 2.7.2.3.9. Just right there, yeah. Historic site and others. Two seven, two point seven, point two, point three, point nine. That's twenty-six thousand, five hundred. Historic sites is usually, if I'm recalling it, I have to look for historic sites, that would be Pascal Poiret House, yes. Uh, could, it could be these train stations as well. Yes, last year, there was an electric panel for the station that was placed, that was installed. There's not one for this year. I was just wondering if it was for Pascal Poiret House. I was just wondering if there are other expenses, again. The council did not yet adopt the plan. We have to have a wider discussion to know in terms, in terms of that asset, it's in bad shape. It's, it's not deteriorating in theory. But what is our long-term vision? That the strategic plan will help us to guide us around that choice. That's good, thank you. Councilor Ronald Cormier, thank you, your worship. I'll go in the same document as Councilor De Pre. I'm going to come back to the Lino Trail of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I really would like to understand, your worship. I want to make sure that I've really got what was said. I'll summarize and if I, if I'm improperly summarizing, I'm sure someone will, will correct me. We're talking about a grant of a hundred fifty thousand dollars and a cost of a hundred fifty thousand, a cost of a hundred fifty thousand dollars that's in the municipal budget. And we are also talking that we can go seek money, nearly up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do this project. Have I properly understood it so far? We were talking about, I'm looking at Financial Director to clarify what we're foreseeing to seek out as financing, yes. Basically, there's already been some discussion with the granting program and there's money that we can look, go get to help pay the hundred fifty thousand dollars. So the money that we'd get, go get is seventy to eighty percent. It's approved, yes, it's approved. It will be deducted from the hundred fifty thousand, okay? So I properly understood things. My question is, why do we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars there? If we're going to seek out seventy or eighty percent, it's the potential to get that amount. If we don't succeed, we can make, do the project anyway. Well, your worship, I would like to modify the request on the part of staff. If we don't have an application, we don't go forward. We'll come here saying that there's a grant that does exist, that potentially exists and we will go get it. If we don't get the grant, I don't think that we should set aside this hundred fifty thousand dollars as an investment. As a municipality, if we can get eighty percent of a hundred fifty thousand, what would that be? A hundred fifteen thousand or so, give or take? My point is that we should put a thirty thousand dollar amount there seeing as we're meant, I don't want to approve a budget. Well, this is my opinion. I don't want us to approve a budget of a hundred fifty thousand dollars and we go get, go for the grant and we don't get it. That means, I think that the rest of that money, we can use it to fulfill other properties, priorities of the municipality. Priorities that I would suggest to my colleagues. I know I've already suggested two hundred thousand dollars and I'll come back to it in a bit to see where it is in the budget for water, access to water. I'm not saying we have to budget it to start the process. We could add the hundred twenty thousand to that or I'm, I'm also open to this. We know that there are four hundred pickleball players. We know that there is a lack of places to play pickleball in our municipality. I would be ready to invest this hundred twenty thousand dollars into increasing the surfaces that we have on the street. I'm not sure what the name of the street is, but your worship, across from the fire hall, Harper? Jubilee, Jubilee, is it Harper? The, where the Dollarama is? I think there's Victoria goes up, Harper is perpendicular, Victoria or Harper? Where the pickleball court is right now. I think if our engineers were to tell me it's not possible, that's another thing. I would rather see that as a priority. That's my own point of view. And I'm, I hope, I will hope, I will wait to see what my colleagues say and perhaps we can do motions if necessary. So far, we haven't had to make any motions. The CAO seems if there's a consensus, we go forward. If there's no consensus, we make choices. That's where, so I will take note of your, of your, of what you've raised and we'll see if there's a consensus around it. And if not, we can deliberate. Thank you. I have another question, another question on the capital budget. Might I suggest? The reports are well done. I'm not saying, when there's item one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, it goes up to fourteen, I think, sixteen maybe. When you refer to a document, it would be great to say document eleven or twelve or thirteen. We're not used to things like, just like you. I'm not saying it meanly, but it would be great. I'm looking for, grants, no. Grants, capital budget, I think it's there. That's where you brought us just now. What, what document did you just refer to? Which one? Twenty, twenty-five council special projects. I have a few questions on that one, Carol. Your worship, first question. The Four Seasons Park. Five hundred thousand dollars. Can I have some more explanation on that one? Certainly. Who can provide those explanations? I can perhaps, I may need to, to get some help, but there was a plan, why don't you start? I don't want to say it's, it started before he came. So there are many groups that meet, that there are community groups and they want to be able to put together a Four Seasons Park. The plans are starting to take shape and there's a meeting that we're organizing with the next year, in the new year with you to see where the progress has been made. Ultimately, there's some investments that would have been made for some legal shares, another investment that have, will have to be done to make some progress on the Four Seasons Park project. Where we made, we did buy the land between the parking lot that we already owned and the solar garden. So we acquired a new plot of land where we hope to put in some trails for the safety of the users of the trail, of the foot trails. There are many investments to be made, that is one of them. Thank you, your worship. Is this the hundred fifty thousand plus the five hundred thousand? No, it's completely different. Yes, it's not for the same thing. Two different projects. It's not for the same investments. And that five hundred thousand dollars, what are you going to do with it? What is it for? I know you said that there are groups that exist, that met and they're going to look at that. The five hundred thousand dollars is for what exactly? What will it produce, you mean to say? Inaudible. Don't I have a right to ask the question? You have a right to ask the question. But they have the mic. Is this something that you can say or to, to make more clear? Was this presented in camera? No. So it could potentially lead to an in-camera discussion. Well, your worship, you've asked, you're asking me to approve an amount of five hundred thousand dollars that is probably one of the largest expenses that we will make in our twenty, twenty, in our twenty-five million dollar budget. Honestly, I wasn't aware that the municipal council in the last two, in the, between the two years I've been here had a priority in a Four Seasons lot. My apologies, your worship, I was not aware of this. And now, it maybe it's a great project, I don't know. But I've never heard our colleagues around the tables speak about this project. I, I think that Paul brought it, brought it up at least once a month. He often asked if we were making progress on the Four Seasons Park. And the acquisition of the lot that we did on Lino was partially, partially to make progress with, on that front. Paul is not here, he'll come back, he'll come back for that one, okay? So phase two of the Rotary Park, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. What do we want to do? What do we, what do we want to do there? It's to make the park more beautiful and landscaping to set, to put us, to put the establishment of the edges. Now that we've done the work, to increase the parking spaces and plans to modify one of the cabins. It's in bad shape and has to be replaced and all of that. And the playground for kids, the kids playground as well. Another question, your worship.
Bro Bridge.
Bro Bridge, phase three. I do understand that we want to do that, I support it. Pardon me, pardon me. It doesn't sound like very much, your worship. Is it for engineering? No. Pardon me? Inaudible. The Bro Bridge phase two, it's for, it's the design. Inaudible, that amount. It's related to acquiring land. Ah, yes. To acquire land, to make a road where there is not a road, just not, just right yet. And your worship. And on the other documents, we were talking of debt servicing. Is this debt, is pre-2023 or did we put it all together? It is all of the amounts that are presented. It's the entire debt for the whole municipality. Is there some sort of gymnastics that's done there? What do you mean by gymnastics? There's principal and interest. Well, well, there's a bit of gymnastics. Most of the projects are public works. So it'd be solely paid for by the taxing authority of Cheyac. And so it's not a shared service. It's a local service. Obviously, all of the new things that are not public works, that becomes shared services. It's the full amount, you see the full amount. But behind that, there's a certain gymnastic. It goes to another taxing authority. Thank you, your worship, that's my pleasure. So I'll make a few notes. I know I have to come back to a few points. Councilor Janis Cormier, thank you, your worship. It's the recreation section. I'll come back to the Pascal Poiret House. I think that we put a lot. I'm really worried not to have money there. At some point, the council has to make a decision on regarding Pascal Poiret house. If we don't put in money there and, and, and you don't anywhere else to get money, we have to. If we put up tarps or just forget about it. The council has to make a decision on that house. What do we do with that house? With no money, it will limit us to not doing anything next year. Once again, it'll be 2026. There'll be more, there'll be more tarps, more problems. Although I don't know if there's money that we can seek out if there's something happens for 2025. Council has to really make a decision around that house. If you look at the, if you look at capital projects, I'll come back to capital projects. I'll come back.
There's 300,000 there. That's not attributed to any project. So if we want to do something with Pascal Poiret, we might go and dip in that. We could come and see you. Do we need to do this? Do you authorize that outlay? There's also the amount of the second year surplus. 791,000. We sit an in and out. It comes into a numbers, we will transfer it to the reserve. So essentially, it's cash on hand that we have for 2025 until we transfer it to the reserve. So there are sums in the budget. If the council wants to act on it, we could affect some sums, but there's no specific line. We don't know which direction the council will take. And not quite in agreement. We know it's there, we have decisions to make. But if you see we have money elsewhere to make a decision. I'm okay with that, but I just want to make sure we can dip into something. Somewhere. Discussion here with the clerks, so I followed you in part. So for Pascal Poiret, without having what we can do, except just to put it back in order. Or, you know, we need a mission for that property. So it'll have to come back, it'll be designed and then with the public, it's a historical house. We won't get another one. So yes, some money are not affected somewhere. Perhaps we could dip in there, it'd be a council decision. But it's a good occasion that's in front of us. Other municipalities have done similar things with historical buildings. I'm thinking at the Duaron House in Zeppe, others elsewhere. There are monies we could get, grants, that'd be quite interesting to help those things. We had done with your predecessor was here, Monsieur Leblanc, we've done a study. That is something we needed to do to be able to access funds. That study is done. But we're not going to transform it into a warehouse. That beautiful house, for sure. So with Pascal Poiret in 24 budget, we had a special budget, 25 grand. To in 24, to study what we could do with it. But it not move ahead, no, there's nothing so far. So many things happened at 24, for sure. So I just would add two for that building. We really need to look and I understand it's historical house, I understand that. But we need to look at, do we keep it or not? So there's a part. So I have difficult decisions to make. So does it have to have a return on it, you know, to, to keep that house? Some big decision need to be taken. They're not going to be easy about this house. But beautiful things could be done. I would recommend for the next meeting or the new year, that we set up a committee to discuss and not to leave it aside. I would say probably more than a committee, perhaps some expertise. You can get four or five people together quickly, you know, but they might not know what to do. So we need consulting, next. So a few points I would like to raise. I'd like to know for nomination of new, we had 300 grand last year for new sidewalks. We increased the budget to another 150 grand. We need new sidewalks. So why is it that all of a sudden we don't have money for new sidewalks? Where it was clearly identified last year that we need to put some money each year for new sidewalks. So who took the decision to have, not have new sidewalks? It's not a decision, it was a recommendation. We discussed at the last meeting, budget meeting. We're doing a transportation master plan that will help us and guide us where we could put ship with our efforts on the issue. We have an amount in the budget that would be the construction of a new street that we will propose in capital spend, spending. So sidewalks will be needed, as mentioned last time. We'd like to give you some directions, clear directions where those investments should be made, specifically for new sidewalks. Right now, we don't have the tools in place to be able to do this. So we will have a plan the next year, a transportation master plan. It should guide us to where to make those strategic investments after 25. And 26 will look construction, new sidewalks. There will be, you know, it'll be associated with new street building, construction. If you remember twice. Former member, the council, Landry, on the chain signs on the highway. To say welcome. And to get rid of you know, the LSDs, they thought about posters for those places. I don't see in the budget that an amount was put there. Perhaps it's another line. Well, over the last two meetings, Councillor Cormier asked the question. It's a budget that we, we looked last year to update of the website of the municipality. Some amounts are left. We talked about branding. The project brought forth by Cormier to identify regions, former LSDs and, and posters on the highway. It's part of that envelope. There's no direct amount, but it's already a directive we, we got, and we got from the council to work on this. So Carol. It's in the budget. It's, it's in the budget, if it's in the budget. Okay, I'm okay then. The part for skateboard. Is this finished or? He recommends things, his services as an artist. He gave me a list of different things he could contribute. Training our employees, which could be done easily. Some costs. There could be co-programming or training. So we plead with his proposal to put it a bit here and there. Thank you. So Tourism Information Office. Is a difference of 88 to 195,000, did I miss something or? You mean an increase? What point? 26911, I think Tourism. It went from 88 to 180 some grand, if I got that correctly. The Tourism Office. It's all with revenue, there's a part in revenue and expense. It's kind of in and out, it's equal. We didn't have that last year, no. No, it was presented differently then. And to come back on the branding. 2.1. We do, we don't have the numbers. So the guide for the good times, is that something that was removed from the budget or? The good times, always part of the plan. What we realized, however, in 24. This was ended up all as very often in the wastebasket. People with the post office would be, would throw that in the basket, wastebasket. Perhaps less copies have formula to be more digital with the new communication officer, which she and I are working on this. We find it, it's too bad that so many copies were wasted. We're trying to find a vehicle, probably electronic, but we want to get into it again 25. There is some money for that in the budget. For capitals, I'll, I'll come back to it later. Last question. About tax rating, tax rates right now. I'd like the question, perhaps we'll put it back to later, but for the three LSDs, Depris, Macron and Cormier. What are the impressions? We suggest to reduce taxes in Cheydiak, but to increase taxes in the LSDs. How will that be perceived politically? You know, we've annexed the LSDs and, and Cheydiak goes down and to increase their taxes. Can I have a comment from those representatives of the LSDs? Or do you want to wait? I would prefer to wait on that one. It'll be part of the overall discussion on tax rates that we will have before the adoption of the motions on the budget. Because that fixes the rates. It's one of the things. People around the table, we pondered this several times and when we presented where the rights are now, where we want to get to. These are serious adjustments, I understand that well. So I think it'll be well, more or less welcome. That's it for now. So I have a note, when we look at the budget presented at the meetings, that's some items. Maybe it's already in other items, I'm not seeing this clearly. I just want to make sure the, the, that we increased the amount for translation. Because last year we've gone over budget, we have 25 grand. So it says, it said included, included in the budget. So I don't remember hearing that. I, it obviously is one of, one of the expenses. Yeah, if we have 25 grand, of course. I can tell you for translation per se, we've increased the budget. Yes, yes, we've increased it. It's in part of other categories. 212.2. I wanted to increase it. So it's in communication, so. Another question. I noticed that our budget, so bizarre linguistic. We had no requests or it's a good program. People are not using it or what? Excellent program. It's a good program, I encourage you to maintain the program nonetheless. What's happening is the takers are usually newcomers opening up. We've got to a point to that, we've offered that offer to existing businesses. But the newcomers have opportunity to get in on it and we will continue with that. I think it's about 15 grand. Yeah, we realize that. Maybe it'll be more commercial year. And also I had Pascal Poiret on my list. I remember the former director, there was a heritage committee, etc. And we said that we would get the cost, what it costs to repair it. I think we've done that. A few, three, four years ago, maybe. And then after that, there was supposed to be a study to give a mandate for the house. Agreed that we need to continue with that project. And perhaps we could put some sums to hire a consultant or somebody that could help us to deal with that. Another thing, we had not include anything for promotional material. We, we had put 35 grand, I think, but nothing had been spent up to the end of August. Did we push this off or? I don't know what the promotional material was. It's in 269.3. It's 10,000 dollars on it. And the reason is we, we had a good inventory of, of that material. So so the expenses are usually done later in the season for the following year. We always have an inventory for the funds in 24 will be used. Not used all yet, but you'll see some invoices coming. I thought it was, yeah, I saw it at the end of August, so. So the expense will be more in the fall, in winter. So that's why we have an inventory that's cycling. The amounts must be there somewhere. I was looking at the special events, cultural events. 290 grand and 204. Usually we see the list to what we contribute and the activities, but now we don't see them. So have some things changed there or is it about same amount as last year? Are we adding activities? I look at account 2709. So flea market and other, other activities.
But de mon côté.
On my end. Everything that was there last time was, is there, has come back. We've had programming. We've had programs for people with mental deficiencies. And like N D F for a very good. So we'll still study the implementation of that program here. And we have more programs focused on sports. I think those are the two things we've added. All the activities, twenty-seven fifty-two. Everything stayed there. Cultural policies, did we leave it at forty? We've increased it. Let me find it. It's important program. I think it's been forty grand for three, four years now. Eighty-two grand. And we'll have programs at where we, and at cabin there. It's something we've added now, we've improved. The honorariums for the, for the hall, the heart hall. To be in standards at that level. Will improve posters for the caban vet, for the artists. It'll be like the artist cabin. We've increased these grant fund. That's why I want to know the, the fifty thousand for the grants. So just want to know what we were gonna give in terms of, right in the table. That we seen for general capital funds. I don't know what part, but I can't remember. Perhaps it could be another fund. Then I don't feel comfortable to, to vote five hundred grand if it's land we're buying or a parking or what. I have a solution that I'll come back with later on. Last question. So development strategy, that's a hundred grand, is that a consultant we're hiring? For gap analysis and so on? If I'm allowed, I put that in the budget this year. You know, after the strategic plan that's coming along. We want to have an economic development plan, few minutes penalty. Yeah, targeted study for the markets. We want to look at education, health services in terms of the commercial level, industrial park. All municipality, we want to do a complete analysis. They'll give us some tools to, the economic development to look at the gaps. It's a big exercise, we put a hundred grand in the budget. And perhaps it won't be that much, but that's what we put there to, in order to do this this year. That's what I want to know, if that included the industrial park. Yeah, it's for all municipality. So again, another last question. So the Chamber of Commerce, Centerville Downtown Project, probably elsewhere. So there's capital projects, but the request. For the other one, is that included elsewhere for storage of Christmas decorations or whatever? I think they're asking for fifteen grand. There are two requests. I was looking at the list. Oh, check, it's another file. I just want to confirm or answer your question appropriately. Another question and then we, we can go to the others if you want to check in the meantime. I just want to clarify. Want to know if the downtown project for operations. Make sure it's there. Chamber of Commerce, the twenty grand. Is that some, that what they're asking or? I choose Chediac and the projects. They have X amount for the golf tournament and so on, and that's divided in there. I choose Chediac. That comes from Chamber of Commerce. There are other amounts. Danny? Maybe not find the number of the line or? There's a total request of seventy-five grand, the Chamber of Commerce, that's for the whole thing. Twenty grand for special projects, I choose Chediac, that's including that, the other fifty-five. There's always twenty-four administrative support, recruiting unit members and so on. And this year, and, and partnership for events. So golf tournament, job fair, etc., gala. And that's ten grand. That's something they ask for every year. And the only thing we do that loud is if there's an event, an event and the invoices. If not, we just put it back in the economic development. Increase of the staff at the Chamber of Commerce. They want a partnership with them. They could hopefully to hire a new person that could be shared. It could be somebody we use in the summer, whether to lobster roads and so on. We need somebody on the ground to do marketing, to make sure all. Businesspeople are all lined up, for the contests. Set up and winter municipality. And in the winter, we need a resource person to be able to move other issues. For the Chamber of Commerce, because she's alone, and results, as you know, you know. So, so what she asks us is we would contribute twenty-five grand to hiring another person full-time. I sent that letter or to the clerk a couple of weeks ago. Details are in there. So the twenty thousand for true Chediac, its promotion. Last year, the committee had decided to push the lifestyle, Chediac. We did a video, we sent you a report. If you saw the video and see. That funding had been put in there. Also Black Friday, other promotions to attract people to shop locally here. So obviously goes through the twenty grand. And what the Chamber of Commerce puts in there too. It's, it's not only downtown, it's, it's all the businesses in town can participate. Also in twenty-twenty-five, we want to see if they want to do a similar promotion. Or if we want to make sure that there are tools in place so they can move. And that's why we put this in the budget again. And I'm okay with it, you know, promote. We want to attract people in Chediac, so thank you, yes? So. So she given the number of the line, that we don't have it here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a long list as well? I appreciated the question for now. I was not here last week, I don't want to go back. Just wondering, with all the amounts of Chamber of Commerce, downtown, so on. Can, do we have a list of the requests of what we've received so far? So the lobster festival, are they asking as much as last year or? It's gonna be seventy-six, I'm not being sarcastic, it's, it's a reality. The AGM take, take place.
Did we get our money's worth? Was it? We did spend a lot last, spend a lot, sometimes we talk about. It's important. This is my first question, okay? May I answer your first question? Yes, please. My first question is related to the lobster festival. It's seventy-five thousand for twenty-twenty-five, we haven't had another application yet. We're ready to accept another application, we can't do that until they have their financial statement. Seventy-five thousand, it's, it's, it's a motion brought for the council. We put it in the budget, it's included. It is part of the motion, that's very good. There's nothing extra that was asked for yet, no, no, not at all. I'm not saying it's not important, I'm just asking, okay, great. Patricia, were you going to answer something? Counselor Patricia, would you like to add something? I just want to answer to your question related. They changed the end of the financial year to November thirtieth. So the AGM will just be taking place start of February. The figures are not yet complete, it's the end of year. And we had a meeting last Wednesday. Where we made the list of what went well, what went great, what maybe didn't go so well. There'll be a report that we can share, perhaps, once it's done, it would be great to see. It's always nice to put money into activities. That have, see a lot of success, but sometimes there might be somewhat less success. But I think the seventy-fifth anniversary was a great success. But thank you very much for contin, thank you for continuing. Second question. This, this second question, I'm adding to Counselor Cormier's question. I agree, a hundred fifty thousand for the Lido Trail. I listened to last meeting's, last week's meeting, I, I do know about this topic. I just wanted to make sure, do we have to put the hundred thousand in our budget to be able to apply for grants? I think that it's very important. I'm not sure that if it's exactly, I'm not quite sure what this Four Seasons Park is. I don't really see it visually right just yet. I think it's important to continue to develop. All of the aspects of municipality. For, not just for tourists. Maybe I can answer this question, the hundred fifty thousand we are putting in the budget, we want to see the project happen. We will always try in any project to see if there are funders who could help us to support our projects. In the case where a funder, there's a funder, it just reduces the expense to the municipality. That sum becomes a surplus amount that the municipality can invest elsewhere. Or can let, leave in the, on the books to have a surplus down the road. To put in the reserve later, more specifically, in terms of the Lino project. If, if the council presents a consensus where they would authorize the advancing of the project if we receive a grant. We can certainly follow that directive. It would simply take a council consensus to say. Yes, we can go forward with the project if we have grants, without grants, we would prefer to have that amount. Not invested in twenty-twenty-five, but maybe. In that kind of a context, because the budget, it would become an amount that the council could reassign elsewhere over the year. No, not, absolutely not, I, I trust the staff. They're putting a lot of time and work into this, it's just a small question. I thought maybe that the question maybe hadn't been properly understood and that we needed to, to do it to apply for grants, no. But I don't, honestly don't quite remember. As I was, it's, as I mentioning for everything, any project that we put forward. For any project that we put forward, we have to do our due diligence, see if there are other partners who could help us with that project. It might be a government partner federally, provincially. It could be a commercial partner. Sometimes there are suppliers who offer grants for such and such a project. And we have to look into that, and sometimes for certain projects, we have to go see the community to do fundraising. One example of this is the Intergenerational Center in Capacadi. They went to see the community to gather an amount of, of over four million dollars to help with the project. There is an element that we have to activate for certain projects, but in this context, it's budgeted, obviously. But if the desire of the council do otherwise, we will do so. Counselor Janice Cormier, thank you, your worship. Two. Lobster Festival, it's on the, it's the first lobster festival. It's a festival that is a really interesting festival, it's been going for a long time. I'm starting to have a bit of a hard time with, we have a blanket statement for twenty-seventy-five thousand each year. I find that the festival is at a high caliber. I would like to see that seventy-five thousand dollars, I'd like to see that it goes to our citizens for the lobster festival. There are lots of activities that are very expensive. Many citizens can't participate. I would like to see where that seventy-five thousand is going. Is it to support things so that our citizens can better participate, so that citizens can pay less? We had these types of discussions last year. I find that we've been, we've been offering seventy-five thousand for several years. What does it bring to our citizens? We know that we bring in tourists, but there's, but there's budgets and other parts of the budget for tourists. But it's in terms of our own community, I don't know how we might, for the council next year to review it more in detail. To see if that seventy-five thousand, should it be the amount we give every year? In other words, you want to see a part of the festival, the part, what part of the festival that seventy-five thousand dollars goes towards. But our budget was one point four million last year. It was the seventy-fifth anniversary, much more, it's somewhere in there. But I'm not sure if the festival would have, would have identified, well, this will pay for such and such a thing or. Or not another thing, I don't know, could Counselor Patricia speak to that? I don't think that festival went in such detail. Not for the amount that we give them each year. The seventy-fifth anniversary, they'd made a presentation, there was the, the fifty thousand for decorations. But since I've been there, it's been a while. At some point, they started increasing the, the cost of the door. And when I became a council, I said, I think it's important that the town's contribution, that we keep those costs reasonable. So we reduce the prices again to five dollars for an adult and three dollars for a teenager. Such that, well, compared to Saint-Marie or P I or. It's where it almost costs ten bucks over there. So the town contribution does try to maintain it and make it, keep it affordable. If you're a family of four to five, it doesn't cost you just fifty bucks just to set foot there. So part of that is going towards, we're trying to keep costs at the door reasonable. There are some people, I've always said, going there. People, people go to Walt Disney, there's people who go there, they see, go for three or four days, it's their own festival. I've always wanted to keep the door prices reasonable. So far, we've kept it five and free for little children. But in terms of telling where the seventy-five thousand goes, it's. If you'll allow, I could add to what Patricia said, the Omar Festival, the lobster festival. Inaudible. The lobster festival provides free shows at the Parc Pascal Poirier in the Rotary Park. There were some last year at Point du Chant. We do activities, the festival does activities at Parly Beach. It's a real, really a community thing. But it's a great question that you're asking. And I do think that the lobster festival could make a report to council. In terms of what has happened over the course of the year. The reason that the seventy-five thousand was put in there was. It's a portion of the budget that is very important to keep prices at a reasonable level at the door. As Counselor Patricia mentioned. You'll also see, I'm always talking about the economic impact, not just for the citizens, but our children work in the restaurants. And it's, this is supported, this supports the tourism industry. Last summer, we don't have the figures yet. But the twenty-twenty-three edition, there was over two point eight million dollars. In terms of economic spinoffs for the festival. This year, it'll be a lot more. I would estimate five to six million. That's just for five or six days of the festival as it happens in Cheyenne, that's enormous. I understand it's not Taylor Swift in Toronto. But nonetheless, for our municipality, it's really important for that seventy-five thousand dollars that you invest. I would recommend that you ask the festival to come give you a report if that's what you're looking for. I think that would be a great idea for them to come. I think it would, if we are asked why we're putting that seventy-five thousand in to the festival each year. It would be good to have something to answer what it does. Yes, you want, we'll do that, thank you. Tennis. I will ask the question for my colleague O'Brien. Asked if we could look into an alternative solution for next summer? I think that the council wasn't in agreement to set aside two hundred thousand dollars for the shed. Uh, three hundred thousand? Have we done some research into any other things we could do that in the budget? There's a sum in the budget that we put in to repair the existing shed. If the council would prefer that we take that amount of money and look to an alternative solution, we will. But obviously, we will wait for the budget to be adopted. To see what option you prefer. If the council prefers that we repair the existing shed, we will repair it. If the council would prefer that with that same amount of money, we look at alternative measures, we will explore alternative measures. We would certainly have to fit it within the budget. If it were not to fit in the budget, we could bring something to the council. So that they might determine if they prefer one option over another. But usually, we first adopt the budget. And then, and the recommendation is to. Set aside a money to repair the shed so that might, could be usable next summer. Is that, uh, does that amount been checked? Have we sought money, sought out prices rather? Yes? So that would bring the shed up to a functional level so that people can use it and it's safe? Yes. That's all, great. Counselor Orona Cormier, thank you, your worship. Your worship. Been two years, one or two years. No, one year, that, that would, yeah. During the summer period to Christmas. The citizens are encouraged to buy a card. It's like a gift card. You buy fifty dollars, it costs you forty. Or you buy a hundred dollar card and it'll cost you, or twenty dollars. I think it's a downtown initiative, where is that in the budget? It's not in our budget. It's in Cheyenne Downtown. It's, that's the, that's in our grant of eighty thousand dollars and that sub, that finances that. I don't think it's like that. The downtown finances that, that's fine. Where is the item in our budget that we, where we offer a grant to the downtown? Where, where is the amount for downtown in our budget? By the way, I think it's a good idea. I'm not against the idea. We were looking for the Chamber of Commerce. It's within that category. I don't know them all by heart, that's okay. Inaudible. 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 Could I, might I suppose that by providing the grant? For the downtown, the town of Cheyenne is part of that offer? If we weren't to give them, I think it was a hundred thousand? So a hundred odd thousand? Mr. Pedera. I can just talk to you about the application from downtown that I shared with the application from the Chamber of Commerce. It was certainly to finance special projects in twenty-twenty-five. The Downtown Development Corporation, they have a business improvement levy, charges taxes to all of the business people within the zone. All of those funds, they come in, they present the budget. The budget is adopted by the town and it goes forward. And within that budget, that's where you find that halo card. That's, within that budget, it's not within the municipal council budget. However, however, the municipal council did receive an application within our own budget that we put in. Within that perspective, we hope to, wish to propose a project twenty-five that aims for improvement of the experience downtown. To encourage visitors to spend more time downtown. That project includes facilities, additional downtown equipment, two picnic tables. Accessible picnic, picnic tables placed in Parc Prescott Party. There's not the places to eat in Parc Prescott Party, people would like to have picnic tables. Downtown wants to make that, acquire that through you to be able to put it in the park. They're also looking to add large-scale games, chess games, checker games. So to offer some entertainment to families and citizens. We think that these initiatives will contribute to strengthen the activities in the park and to extend. How long people stay in downtown. To achieve that project, it would be, we estimate, it's estimated at fifty thousand dollars. The downtown is Inc. is looking for a contribution from the municipality of forty thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-five budget. That forty thousand dollars is the, is what is being asked of the town. Is there anything else, Carol, except for that? No, thank you for checking. Counselor Patricia Brookshavari. Now, that forty thousand is for special projects and now there's a request for operations budget to the. But for the halo card, that's financed by the assets that are not allocated from the previous years. The downtown accumulated surpluses over years. So for them, provide a discount on the card, it's like giving back. You can only use it downtown. So it's a way of putting money back in to the business people. That's the accountant speaking right there, thank you. So it's not eighty thousand. Great. Well, if you go to Black Friday, it'll cost you a little less. So we closed out the big budget document. Now it's, uh, general, we've seen that. Were there other questions on that? We did both at the same time? Otherwise, I would say, Madam Finance Director, you continue with the next document. But at some point, there'll be no more numbers. It's still number six. It's the last document, capital funds. Capital funds. It's basically. The last num, numbers remaining. It's the end of the presentation for the budget. Okay? So to recap, the document that you see, as that Carol mentioned, with green in it. Those numbers in that, in that document are the last figures, they include amounts. The other, the other, with the gaps. It's the amount of one point one, two eight, two five three, two eight, two five four, and two eight, two five five. The interpreter apologizes, he misses one of those, he missed one of those numbers. So you see here, capital funds general, transportation one point one five, six eight five, five four five, five hundred. That document, that is, that represents those amounts in that format. So that's the entirety of the budget that we have presented. It's a total budget of twenty-five. Twenty-five million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. And if we go to the next document within your attachments, it should say twenty-twenty-five assessment base. Twenty-five five assessment base scenario. So you see before you, six different scenarios that we're presenting to you. So the first column, the one to the left is status quo, no changes in terms of tax rate. Neither in the former local service district or in town. The one in the middle, where you see the green and yellow includes a, that, a tax reduction in the former limits of the town of Cheyenne. Of one point five cents and an increase in the former DSLs of five cents. And the third is a reduction of three cents in the town of Cheyenne. And an increase of five, of five cents in the former local service districts. You see that there's an upper part and a lower part. So the first one at the start, when I came into the budget presentation. I spoke about a non-residential rate of one point five. Formerly, the provincial government before the reform. Had a reduction of the non-residential rate in order to enable municipalities to seek out that amount. Or for an additional source of revenue that the municipality could seek out. Municipality had never looked for that money. They maintained the rate. So the residents after the reform who had a, probably designated, that was designated non-residential. Saw reduction in tax rate because we didn't adjust the rate. The municipality can play with that rate up to one point four to one point seven. So we just wanted to show to you and below the second chart, the monetary impact. Let's say you wanted to increase that rate up to one point seven. It would generate the difference between the one point five to one point seven. It would amount to a half million in additional revenues, five hundred fifty thousand in additional revenues that the municipality could play with. Our recommendation is not to touch that rate this year, but that next year, that rate be gradually increased. Such that you would go pre-reform rate, a one dollar sixty-five cents, that's the exact amount. The town of Moncton, the town of, the town of Riverview have all adjusted their rate. And the first year, we have never adjusted it. There are some municipalities who want to maintain it at one point five, some municipalities want to reduce it. Our recommendation is to maintain it for this year, but that we increase it in, by small steps. To get, eventually get to the pre-reform rate. In the three scenarios that we're presenting to you, we're evidently presenting the scenario of the middle one. It is to reduce Cheyenne by one point five cents and to increase the LSDs by five cents. And the reason for this is that at the start of the presentation of the budget, we presented the fair rate. That what are the services that the former LSD should be paying, that they are not paying, exactly paying. And what part, portion, does the former town of Cheyenne prop up? We spoke about a gap, I think it was about sixty-odd cents, that would be the fair rate. And we had also spoken about a rate of about one dollar and thirty-five, I do believe. With the town of Cheyenne, which would includes public, which would include public works. So to equalize, to balance things, we need to continue to increase the rates for the former LSDs and bring things down. To arrive at the fair rate so that people, everyone's paying equally. It will take many years to get there and many budgets to get there. But our first step would be to follow the recommendation, the middle recommendation, which would generate. Twenty-two point five seven eight million. The other revenue would be generated from our own sources, be it fees, additional fees. The surplus for the second year would be included in that. We asked, it would create a total budget of twenty-five million. Are there any questions? I would foresee some questions. Counselor Patricia Brookshavari. If we reduce the tax rate. In that, according to that middle scenario, somebody who has a house that's two hundred fifty thousand and the assessment would remain the same. What, how much would they save? For each a hundred thousand dollars, it would be fifteen dollars. So you'd be talking thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven fifty? Not much. Thank you. That was quick math. If you, if you told me two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. It's fifteen dollars for every hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand, forty-five dollars. And chances are that your assessment would have increased, so you'd save forty-five dollars. You'd probably save a part of the increase, yeah. But you'd have it increased nonetheless. Thank you. That's that for the assessments. We'll simply receive that at the end of January. Yes, it's just that, I'm just trying to see if the citizens will have some more money in their pocket. After having paid their taxes in May. Counselor Peter Bro. I'm coming back to my question, my earlier question. I have a hard time conceiving. Unless my colleagues in the LSDs can answer the question. That with an increase of the budget of three million. That we reduce our taxes and then we increase the, our neighbors that are associated. It's hard enough to make the, all the communities work together. For a revenue, it's about a hundred twenty-eight thousand more. I think that politically, it's not going to be well viewed. I don't know, I'm not sure how you expect to sell it, I'm not sure how the other council members will answer the questions. We, we reduced our taxes, but we increased the taxes of the LSDs and we're all going to work together. I think it sends a bad message. And I'd like to hear people, other people around the table to see what they think about this. What do they, what do they think that their citizens will say? When we see that we're bringing down our taxes and increasing other people's taxes, is it too much to ask? No, I would allow that. I don't know if, do you have an answer of some sort? I'll start to my left, Counselor Depre. What are your impressions? Peter, nobody likes a tax increase. We're going to have some things to explain, it's not going to be easy to answer that question. When they received the message yesterday that we're bringing the tax down in Cheyenne and raising them for us. I have to be ready for these questions, you're right.
Counselor McEnroy.
Counselor McEnroy.
Reaction to Counselor Bro's question?
Certainly. It's my understanding, just in general terms, that amalgamation brought districts into other existing municipalities. And the tax rates in the districts that were brought in were far less than the tax rates in the municipalities to which they were amalgamated. And I think everybody has a general understanding that that has to level out at some point. Maybe not a hundred percent, depending on what happens over time. But at least the process has to start of gradually increasing. And I think the problem is put a limit of five cents.
The five cents per year?
Per year, yes, on the amount that the increase could be. So technically. So technically, and I stand to be corrected by those more knowledgeable than I am, but we're underpaying now for some of the services that are being provided, that are accessible to our residents in the town of Chediac, to which we now belong. So that concept, I think people generally understand and accept. But the key issue is, they have to start to see increases in services. And I am happy that the dog bylaw, animal control bylaw or whatever, and the dangerous insectly prenuses bylaws will commence, I believe, in January to be, to be provided. Those services will be new services provided to the former LSD areas. There are two bylaws which are important, certainly to the area that I represent. There are others that I'll start back on in the new year, I guess. So I think if they, as I mentioned, they understand the concept, but to have a tax increases happen and then not see anything, you know, what's going on with these other services that we're supposed to be getting? Well, as we pay more, we should be able to participate more in services provided. So I think that's generally where I'm coming from. I know it's not going to be 100% elation over the situation. But to see, truly, really fundamental, really, really key to me, and I believe the residents that I represent, to see steps taken, concrete steps taken to improve and increase the services provided to these areas that have been amalgamated.
Thank you.
Mr. Simison, ma.
The citizens, will they look at this, you know, 5 cents compared to a reduction on the, the citizens of the former Chediac? I think it explains anyway. I agree with Councilor McEnroy. As municipal council, we must offer services to, that others did not have. We start with two bylaws. What interests me more in the long term, we can explain to citizens on the last table, what is really the cost, the real cost, is probably why I often question numbers, you know, what's shared. To make sure citizens, those, they can see that everybody is aware, that somebody's got their back. And we have good answers from our employees. What I like in this table, we look at taxation rates in the long term. And we see that people outside the old Chediac will still have, in the long term, the same taxation rate. If at some point we have the same tax rate, then there'll be enormous issue. I think it was a forced amalgamation and that we're trying to do the best we can to defend the interests of all communities. I tried to talk on behalf of all communities, but not just mine. The reaction to 5 cents, yes. We have services to supply to all citizens. That's, that's where, it's the fact of being in the municipality. That's it, yeah. As said before, the manager, the adjustment to get everybody pay their just part, their fair share, from what we foresee, that about 66 cents that would be paid for shared services. The former LSDs and Chediac Cave and so on, they will never pay the rate that's charged to the former Chediac. Because the former Chediac will pay for additional services, public services, public works. Unless it's shared services, because, but it's not planned because the provincial government did not include that in the reform. If I understand. We can see in our projections, it's an adjustment to be done over several years. And the only thing, as Councilor Peter, yes, it doesn't look well at first. We lower one and raise the other. Not the best impression. But the only thing we can do for the Chediac rate is to maintain it and to fund, fund a bit more the local services. That's the only option. Because the cost of shared services would reduce with contribution with the former LSDs. Once we've reached each equal share, then we can look at reducing everybody or raising everybody. You know, if it's 1 cent, 3 cents, it'll go up and down. We'll see with subsequent budgets after the adjustment's been done. But in the meantime, it is going to go up a bit in the old Chediac. The solution could be not to lower it, but it'll create a certain amount. We could decide to use it for more, more local services. You know, once we have the transportation master plan, I think we'll have a good list of what we can do. There will be an annual decision by the council. I think we can't take decision on this tonight. The reality is that, you know what needs to be done, but perception will be otherwise. We should have the option to keep the tax rate. Politically, is it equal out? If it equals out, I have no problem, but I think everybody should see what type, what kind of impact that would have. Elections are coming up in a year and a half with that play as well. So it's up to everybody to decide, yeah, with the type of impact it could have. If I might add, we understand the challenge and discussion, the thoughts you're having. It's not easy for administration to make recommendations like that. But by principle, for the reform, we wanted to show you what the real shared rate was for the time being, until we get to parity in all the regions. Somebody is subsidizing and the other is benefiting, until we get parity. When we look at municipalities around us, like Capacadi, with the reform, they equalized the rate practically from the start. They reduced by 5 cents. Reducing 5 cents in the town and the former LSDs increased by 5. This year, last year, 2 cents. And then this year, another 2 cents, except when more, only 1 cent. So they saw a quick reduction, so now they're coming back to the pre-reform rate. And that's just to the east of us. If we go into the west, we look at Dieppe. Their former LSDs since reform, they've got an increase of 5 cents. And the former downtown, or Dieppe, had the reduction, constant reduction to go down to the fair rate. This year, Dieppe will have a reduction of 6.5 cent. Moncton, about the same thing. Riverview, about 4, 5 cents. So they have a tendency, it's a different dynamics than us. They don't need full, they've already gone through the growth of infrastructure for a few years. Right now, we are seeing that growth now. And we have to continue to invest. So we're not lucky that we can see a reduction, as big a reduction as our neighbors in Moncton and Dieppe. But we're also in a situation where compared to Capacadi, we can offer to a citizen a reduction to get parity, something that was not done before reform and to bring everybody to the fair shared rate. So that's a recommendation. All options that we present, we are capable of adopting any of those scenarios with some slight modifications without having an impact on the projects. It's our duty to make recommendations, to tell you where we should go. But it's up to you to decide. Yeah, congratulate the work. It's great work and no question there. In term of logistics, that has to be done. But do we want to do that, that way? So that's what we decide at the end of the day. Thank you.
I'm all for passing the tax.
I'm also for reducing taxes. We had an increase of 12% this year. That 12% in the fiscal, what represents in that budget, that increase? About 3 million. Couldn't we come, take a part of that to fund a decrease of 5 cents? This is extra that we didn't, you know, the loan be deeper than 3 cents, we never know. The, for instance, Moncton, Dieppe, they're at the point where they look at what the increase is. They've already, they've already a place, and they're a place where they're comfortable. They don't need a whole amount of the increase to fund the different projects, the different upgrades they have at services. Even before they getting numbers, they knew that the increase would be kept at 5.5%. The rest, they give back citizens. Is it realistic with what we see over the next few years? Yes. We don't feel comfortable to go deep like this. Whether we get to the fair rate at the same time. If we go 5 cents, we'll get there quicker. Eventually, we'll have to slow down. So more apt to say, you know, maybe 3 cents this year, reduce 9 cents over the next 3, 4 years. We can see, you know, how we can do this fairly. But we're not talking about the same thing where we have to readjust some of the numbers in the budget to balance the budget. Right now, with the scenarios presented, we can balance the budget with the slight modifications without affecting the wishes of the council. I understand the reason I'm for a decrease. Residents in Chediac, they expect that this year. I think, you know, rising cost of living, you know, property cash, whatever, they're expecting a reduction. So that's why you support 5 cents. But that 12%, that 3 million that was added, maybe a good part of that, how much would it take off out of that 3 million? 6, 700,000? 1 and 1/2 cents is not enough. I understand. I did an overview with other colleagues in other municipalities. Greater Moncton reducing, the rest remain at the same or increase. Just to say, like, 10 or more, 1/2 cent. I'm just talking about Chediac. You know, you look at what's happening in the region, but, but what allows greater Moncton? For instance, the increase of close to 10% gives them practically 17 million more. You know, an extra 2.8, practically 3. Even a small increase, and Moncton has a big impact because they're so big already. But for us, we could have a big increase, but has less impact. Something we could play with. You look at the tax reduction, look at investments that are necessary. And when, as we saw in the start about the operations, you know, will be a 17% for the debt rate, and that's more growth we need. You know, it's a bit of a surprise that 3 million, that 12% added revenue should take part of that to give back to residents. That's my, my argument. So thank you. So, yeah, you're giving your 2 cents. Chairman Galan. I don't agree with you, but. I'm not agreeing with him. We wanted to build a new arena to do all those things, perhaps increase tax because citizens will have to pay for the new arena, the new things. So to reduce the tax rate and maybe next year, we'll have to increase again before the arena. So, so where you're thinking, I don't understand, you know, thinking of reducing and then re-increasing for a new arena. And you said it, it, you know, reducing 1.5 cent is not much, not enough. About 15 dollars per 100 grand. Is it worth it? Or perhaps we should take that 15 dollars per 100 grand and to make a reserve. I have 2 houses here I would like to decrease. But if you want to increase to build an arena and we need it, we need arrangements, we need whatever. Maybe, is it worth it to reduce it and then 2 years? You say, guess what? We have to go up 10 cents because we need to pay for a new arena. So maybe I'm, whatever the sound was. That's what I'm thinking, that's.
Councilor Harry McEnroy.
Just a couple of other points. As Chediac, the former town of Chediac rate comes down over the years due to growth, due to increasing the tax rate and revenue from the former LSDs, the point of meeting becomes lower. That's a benefit. Another thing, it's a reality that a lot of taxpayers realize. And we trumpet the fact that the town of Chediac is booming. We've grown so much. We're leading the province in growth. We're giving incentive grants to developers to build apartment buildings. All this additional revenue is coming in. Increased assessment, twelve and a half percent growth. If you keep the tax rate the same, what are you saying to the people who been paying that rate for all those years prior to the big boom? There's nothing in the boom for you. I can understand and appreciate that we do need to increase, upgrade our infrastructure to accommodate what we've already encouraged and benefited from in terms of development. Plus allow for future development. So I can see that we, you don't want to reduce drastically. But there's always been that mindset or that understanding generally in the public. That if you, if municipality maintains a tax rate, when the assessment goes up, then they're kind of playing games. And I think they'll see that they're being treated fairly if there's a, if there's an adjustment in favor of, of the higher tax rate bracket, if you will, within our municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your opinion for me?
I support the recommendation by administration. I think it's important that we, we do the balancing act. About so thinking, reducing Chediac, I don't think it's gonna put us in misery of not having the arena. It's not a big amount, it's a slight amount that we give back, it's not much. I don't think it's not gonna have such a big impact that next year we could still continue with the new arena. That will need a new tax increase, I don't. I think everything makes sense, we take, we take it slowly. We, we try not to increase too much. I know perception, maybe it's not gonna look well, but I think communication will be an important part. What we deliver to citizens and the town can prepare, communicate to make those explanations. I would recommend the, I would support the recommendation by administration. I think it's good work, it makes sense. Not too long ago, I think at the spring, when people get their invoices, we become very popular at Zenbank, everywhere, like everywhere. Especially if there's growth. Many asked me. We had fixed the tax rate this time last year in May. This is something, it's already set, but we, can we do something for what comes next? I've helped, several have said we'd like a reduction. And we talk to our neighbors, like in Greater Monten, then we won't be able to follow them. Not if they continue as they're planning, it's impressive. But invested a lot over the past years, now they maintain what they have, they're much bigger. Even if they still invest. Unless they invest, you know, something like seven hundred million, you know, that'd be different. But we pay with small, we pay with small numbers. But there is a desire to start to get the reduction. Everybody has good points. There's only recommendation that I could not vote for is the one to, to reduce five cents. I tried to listen, Counselor O'Brien, to understand why, but. I, I don't understand, nobody wants to pay tax, it's normal. I understand that O'Brien regularly asks for many things. So I don't know if who, who you think is gonna pay for all it. I could make a list, no, without doing details. I could make a list. Understand, Mr. Mayor, I. Jermaine, I'm not saying she's not right and, I don't think that she's not right. I think perhaps we'll position ourselves the next time when we approve the budget, but. The deadline is November twenty nine. But I'm not gonna support the reduction. I don't think it would be responsible for us as a council. I'll see on the tax rate, I have two, three points I want to bring up. It's the longest discussion we ever had on tax rates. Yes, we're accountable to our citizens. I agree with the reduction because. We haven't reduced it for a long time, as my colleague said. With the growth, the revenue is coming in, the, and citizens see they don't have, they're not getting anything for it, for that increase. And when they ask about projects. The line, Bow Bridge. When I see it's gonna be paid for eighty percent, the sewer line and we have federal money and so on. But some people have said, you know, Bow Bridge, if it increases my taxes, I don't agree. So we'll invest in Bow Bridge and I think we have to invest. As citizens, I would support three cents if, if management says they can live with it, they could balance this out. I would be okay with one point five, but even more with three cents. So if they say they can live with that and find change somewhere, I would agree to three cents, my opinion. Do you want me to raise my points or, or let others talk about the exact rate your points were on what? On this or assessment freeze or what? Add other points to bring up. There are three other documents to go through. Is it pertaining to one of those or? We can go through the documents, my points are that throughout the budget. Before the motions, there's some subjects that we have to get consensus, minor hockey, new road, four season, access to water. So before, I would like to hear your opinions. So clarification on minor hockey, letting cap, capital project. I'd like to hear what the others recommend after we've gone the other tables.
Also, O'Brien.
To answer the questions to the Counselor Camille. I, I have the right to my opinion. And what I do and it's goodwill, when intentions, if Mr. Camille doesn't understand that, it's just too bad. So encourage you to express yourself for sure, for everybody, to make your point, not the others' point. On capital spending, project capital, Adam Director. We're back at it. We want to see the rest of it and then we'll have a wider discussion to get to a resolution. Capital projects, we have a station, Bow Bridge. Up to Ohio, total cost of the projects, eleven point nine million. But there's two sections, so the first section, I would say, the, for the commission. Nine million is for capital projects, general capital projects. The second section is for borrowing for utilities.
Eleven point nine million. But for general capital is nine million and for the lending commission, the other system, the amount comes from the water system. And then there's also the project with, for the Calder Street. Total for that project is four point four million, four million general capital. And four hundred thousand for the section for water.
Calvert.
Trailstorm Calvert. We were supposed to do that one in twenty twenty four, it was not done. There were some issues that were encountered. So we canceled that one in twenty twenty four and pushed it back to twenty twenty five. That's on this part of the trail towards Puduchin, that's that area. So that's a total project of one point eight million dollars. And next, we added in capital, general capital. Two pieces of equipment for public works, a loader and a backhoe and. We, there's a generator that was to be purchased for the municipal garage. Right now, if there's a, if the power goes out, nothing works. So it would be important that we set up that generator. In terms of capital others, there's the trunk sewer line added. The total cost for that project is fifteen million, but our costs would only be three million. So that's a total, project total of, the interpreter believes it was seventeen point two million, but he's not certain. So the generator, it's a, it's a, it's a good decision, it's a good thing. What's the dilemma? Why, why do we need it? I know that we have electricity, nothing's working, but in terms of. We hadn't planned a generator, I don't believe, that when we built it, when the building was designed originally. As I understand it, it included a generator, but ultimately what was built did not include it. Did not, does not include it. There's space for it, let's say, and a little bit of planning for it, but. The, let's say that the connection to the building, the transfer switch, et cetera, that was not installed. I think that at the time, again, somebody's told me this, but. It was something that he said, oh, we'll do it in the future, when it's possible. It's possible to, like you can open the big fence where you store the equipment, they have battery backup on those things. So we're not completely stuck if there's a, the power goes out. But it would certainly make things a lot better for the operations team. If there was, the power went out during a storm, for example. Normally, it's when we get the storms that you, you run out of, that, that power goes out, yeah, those two goes to go together. It was an item that I tried to break forward, forward last year, but we had to remove it. Just things didn't balance last year. It would be a need for the center. So that explains things, the other amounts are to replace equipment that is at the end of its service life. Those lovely, uh, pipes, it's a big cost for the trails, it's what it costs. We can't close the trail for good, we want to keep it open. And there's, it's our streets and there's a trunk sewer, that's, that's no more complicated than that. Counselor Peter Bro, question, three questions on the capital projects. So, the culvert. Do we absolutely need it? If we don't do it, what are the consequences to that? At this point, there are two storm drain pipes that cross the old rail bed, the old sea on rail bed. Danny came to make, do a presentation last year, maybe you remember it. At that point, well, if we don't do anything, here's the risk. Eventually, it could crumble, there could be a big weather event, it could flood and wash out the trail altogether. At one or both points. And there's a risk there. A trunk sewer, there's a sanitary trunk sewer that is on, on the, the trail and it could be carried away as well. It would not be a good thing, not at all. Thank you. Next, second thing, the loader and the backhoe, are these, is this additional equipment or just replacing? The backhoe is a replacement of, of the one we already have, the loader is additional. So the trade-in and the backhoe, what's, what's the revenue? Where, where do we see the revenue? Or is it, it's just part of the two hundred fifty, it's not reflected? But the intention would be descended to auction? Revenue for something like that could vary between fifty to seventy five thousand, if it, if it's a really good result. Do you have a comment on that? Inaudible. The revenue would be additional, you don't put that in the budget. Right now, in terms of auctions, the prices can vary. Do we have nothing to base ourselves on to establish what the return would be? I would prefer to have an additional revenue that you would see in our financial statements. And then we could bring this for the council and say, what do you want to do with that extra revenue? But the basic scenario, it's the worst case scenario that we're presenting to you. So when you're getting rid of that asset or the elimination that, that would lead to additional revenue. So the strategy, this pay as you strategy for capital projects, is that still working? There's some, but a lot less. We want to wait for the strategic plan and its completion and the transportation master plan as well. Which updating our five-year plan. There are many tools that right now are being updated. So, so that we can feel comfortable presenting projects and where they should be going. Right now, is there some pay as you go in the budget? But not very much, yes, but a lot less in previous years. We want to put a pause and focus our efforts on the things that are necessary. I spoke to you of this want and needs concept, we want to focus on the needs and the wants. If we have the capacity to do it in the future, we could go there. But we really, really want to focus on our needs. We have to do some work to present something that is much more. We want you to make informed decisions, not just emotional decisions. We want prepared documentation, we're preparing that right now. I will mention the asset management plan, we had a meeting today to launch the asset management plan. What we have to invest in, where, at what time, we're working on the five-year plan as well. In the future, we want to present files that are a reflection of reality. Right now, we are missing a lot of information for the last few years. And if I can say this, the, the plan is a bit out of date, let's say. I went far for to say out of date. Eh, I went far for, to say out of date there, but I'm not sure, eh, 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 done it justice. We really need to update a lot of things because of the last few years. We weren't presented a complete plan, eh, when it will be done. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilor Bro. So you may, we made our CEO invent the word in French. We won't win the prize, the gra, the French grammar prize tonight, but there you go. So, that's it for capital budgets. But we do have the minor hockey item, you had requested some additional information. I said we have two documents. Would somebody, would, would Julie like to talk about it? Basically, if I can just summarize the last discussion. We received a, eh, an application for a grant from minor hockey. You had lots of questions, so we've gotten, we found the answers. Irrespective of the council's decision, our recommendation is to maintain the amount in the grant. We think, I think that there was a discussion. Perhaps the amount in reserve was not sufficient. Council wanted to set aside a bigger reserve. So we recommend that the twenty thousand dollars or the portion of twenty thousand dollars that might not be used, but to maintain it in reserve, to provide opportunities over the year if there are others, eh, other requests. I would, eh, I also communicated with Capacadi. They received a similar request for a lesser amount. But the amount, eh, the council, when they adopted their budget, decided not to retain the application and to not go forward with a grant. Eh, I'm not sure if you have anything to add. To summarize what you wanted in terms of information, you wanted to eh, have some information on their budget and the organization's finances. As well as the number of children from Chediac. So in the first document, the PDF, that is entitled Minor Hockey, on page four, according to the revenue. Eh, we compare revenue, eh, eh, to expenses, we see a profit of a little less than twenty thousand dollars. That's before the application for the grant. When I sought out that information to ask why, what they were going to do with the money, eh, remaining money, eh, the grant application and for, to our, eh, 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 our grant, eh, programs do allow profit, but has to, it has to be, it has to be, does have to be reinvested in the community though. So if you see in the document, eh, the second document, the last document, attached to the agenda, the information is this. That information will help to cover the jerseys, hockey jerseys. Because they just lost a program that, eh, helped pay for the jerseys. And in addition, to prevent an increase in fees, it's about thirty dollars per player for next year, if you compare the number of registrations for this year. Right now, you can count four hundred and sixteen young people who are registered minor hockey with the Association Chediac Capelé and only a hundred and se, seventy are residents of Chediac. Thank you for that information. It's, eh, makes the picture clearer, Councilor Jeanne-Carmier. Thank you, your worship. I'm, eh, I, I agree that the twenty thousands, it's a no for me. And I don't think that it's the responsibility of the town to buy hockey jerseys. Eh, it would set a precedent that all of the, eh, sports would want jerseys and they'd come to the town for this money. But I would like, eh, for us to look to paying, eh, putting, paying the thirty dollars for the Chediac players. It's a little, it's like six hundred dollars, we could add that eh, with the people who register for minor hockey. There's, eh, a, a cost related to the Capelé Arena. Eh, I would agree to pay the thirty dollars for those, eh, young people. It's thirty, eh, per player times a hundred and seventy, it'd be like five thousand one hundred dollars. Ah, okay. I would be interested in seeing that in the budget. It's not... It's not the young people, eh, have asked for this arena and said that the minor hockey has to increase because they've had those challenges. I'd like to pay the thirty years, the thirty dollars for, this year for those young people. Eh, from another account. So there would be equivalent donation of four thirty dollars. That's what I'd like to see. I don't know what the other people want to see, but... Well, I'll ask for some clarification in terms of our policy. In terms of support or donations for young people playing sports. Is it fifty dollars per young, young person? That could, that could pay for hockey or soccer, swimming, dance, et cetera, a variety of things. We have a framework for that, without, let's not forget that. I would add, for minor hockey, eh, inaudible. An additional amount, eh, eh, for this year only, an additional amount beyond that fifty. And we'll go back to the fifty dollars for next year. For minor hockey, it's, you know, given the, the, the changes to the arena. Thank you for their, your clarification. I was wondering if it's for you nine or for the hundred and seventy young people eh, of Chediac who have to pay those thirty dollars? The four hundred and sixteen, neither one. So everyone pays for the new jerseys, is what you're saying? It's as part of the operations of the association. Each year, the association has to renew some, eh, jerseys and, and, and you under nine just got added to that list. So for that, I think we now understand what's, eh, what's up. So, in terms of the question, this idea of, this notion of grants, we already went through it. We're already, we were all rather aware of it, there's this twenty thousand dollars that was requested, that was there. So we would go to amounts of thirty dollars times the number of young people, that would be around five thousand one hundred dollars. If I've done my, the right calculation. We could give that additionally to minor hockey and the rest of it would still be available in the budget for donations. I would just like to have some, a better direction on that front. In terms of management. Are we offering a grant to minor hockey? Once they come to the identification that they've given the money to the young people of Chediac? Or is it up to us, eh, staff, to do it indirectly? To pay that thirty dollars indirectly in addition to the others? And, eh, eh, how do we separate the two out? Maybe it'd be easier this way. Eh, they could, eh, it's a, eh, application for, eh, donation from the association. We could make a donation to the association, the amount with the stipulation. So might I propose that I think about some criteria, and that I come back to you? And that we can, yeah, that's great. I find that very reasonable, thank you. So... If, eh, Madame, eh, Councilor Chevry raised, eh, four points, there's minor hockey. I think that we can look, see that the envelope stays the same with the amount. The finesse director, eh, the community director, eh, eh, life director will give, provide the mechanisms to see how we will manage that. Basically, that would, can tell us that the question of, eh, grant is answered, is, am I right in saying that? I think it would be good. From the standpoint of the Lino, eh, project, it would be to receive from the project, eh, from the council, if it's okay, eh, to go forward with a hundred and fifty? Or do we go forward if we receive a grant? The both scenarios will... If we, if we take one direction over another. Obviously, the amount not used would go to a type of, eh, go into a type of, eh, non-allocated budget. Non-allocated budget. And we can use that amount, eh, if we have to make some changes to the rates based on the three recommendations. I would also like to add, in terms of, to the, eh, the trails on our land, on, on Lino Road, the objective was to come present to you in the future, eh, trails project. Unfortunately, we were forced to accelerate, eh, our efforts to move that project forward. It was because of, for the safety of the users of the trails. There's a section of the trails that is not safe for users for reasons, I, I'm not sure if I have a right to mention it here. And for those reasons, the association asked us to go faster with their project. Our project, to be able to use our road and our lands to create trails to ensure the safety and thus make sure that people, eh, continue to benefit from the trails, the foot trails. Thank you. That means it was one of the reasons, there were others, but it was one of the reasons why we bought the piece of land last year, or this year actually, rather. Last year. So, on the question, on the item that the CEO raised, how do you see it, Councilor Jeanne-Carmier? First of all, if we have trails that are unsafe trails, we should be closing them. That's the first thing. If there's something dangerous and it's on municipal land, it's not on, it's not on municipal land. It's on land that the, eh, outdoor association negotiated with the owners to put in a trail. Ah, thank you. Well, if it's not our land, it's less our problem. I... There's, there are trails that are available to the public, the, the, the hundred fifty thousand dollars. I am the... I say that we use part of it if we have a grant, if we don't have the grant, I would put it in reserve. Thank you, Councilor Carmier. Councilor Jeanne-Carmier, thank you, your worship. I'm a, I somewhat agree with Councilor Carmier, but at the same time, I'm a bit worried. I'm a bit worried with the things that, about the things that Julie has shared with us. Is there a way for the budget to move forward with the budget, to put a little caveat just on that file? I think that the information, we are missing some information to make this decision around that money. Is there something that we can do to approve the budget? But that part, well, I think we have, need to have some other discussions. There's some, there's missing information and we can't make a proper decision. Well, basically, we can put that sum in the budget, but we won't allocate it before the council makes a decision. Eh, we get more information, we can do that. Instead of debating this, let's put it in. Is that... Is, is everyone in consensus with that? I think so, it sounds good. So, we'll add it to the, eh, unallocated amount in the budget. Basically, it's, eh, it was three hundred, it would be now four and fifty thousand. Great. Madame Finesse Director, in my mind, what, what I could recommend is that a hundred fifty thousand for that. You haven't decided if yes or no, you'll be paying it out. You can take it out of that line item and allocate it and increase the special projects for the council, that's what we're looking to do. And to have that expense approved, is that okay? Great, great. And then we'll have more information to make a decision on whether or not to invest. And if I might, eh, stand the same wavelength as the finance director, I'd recommend that the Four Seasons Park, we do the same thing. We, let's take that amount, put it in the council's special projects for a more well-informed decision in a new year. Is everyone okay with that? In terms of, eh, the water access, access to water file? Let's have a comment on that. I'll, Councilor Jeanne-Carmier, I, I, I want to say before I forget, let's not forget. Paul is always saying, you have to put money in our trails and our parks to have our citizens be more active. If this is what it is. We've been talking about these projects for a long time, let's not forget. Eh, Apasoa, they put in a lot of their own money, a lot of time making those roads. It's just, in addition, eh, we're just making, doing in addition. It's a good thing, but we'll wait. I just want to give my opinion. Great. Councilor Bro was another question, or have we resolved it? It's not, it's not, that's not where my question is, it's a question for Julie. Can we go back to it? So, okay, you can ask the question, eh... Eh, what's, what's your question? The user fees. If I've understood correctly, it's fifty dollars for one activity. Irrespective of the activity. We're talking about a grant of fifty dollars. Ah, yes, for young people. Once a year, you can do it once a year, for, 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 for one activity. How much does that cost us? Right now, it's eight thousand and a bit, eight thousand and a bit. Given that there'll be some budget amount remaining in the, eh, minor hockey, I'd like eh, to increase that to two or three activities. It's a good, eh, it's a good idea, eh, listen, eh... Our young people, eh, we want to, they're on their tablets all the time, we want to have them be active. I think limiting it to one activity, it's not very much. And I think that it should be a minimum of three activities. And if they want to paint or dance and hockey, well, at least they'll be out. But limiting to one, hmm, I find it's, eh, it limits our young people. I think we owe this to our young people. I would like to see us change that policy from one to three. So, if I can add to the question, eh, evidently, we would want to present a modified policy to the council. Evidently, it's administrative task, we wouldn't want applications to come in three times in a year and that would create three times more work. But we would like to see a mech, a mechanism, eh, where you can apply for more than one. You don't know how many times this pen signs, eh, checks for fifty dollars for parents. I like, I had, I sign a lot of those checks. It's important, it's for our young people. So, I just want you to understand, administratively, I can come back to you with options. We can provide options, I think that the council can determine after we brought the policy before you, if they want to use that, eh, amount in the grants, eh, to put them there. We can certainly come back, what we need, eh, a clear policy on how we're going to implement this to do it. So do we put this in the budget? Right now, the amount is our, is already not in the budget, is already in the budget, you just have to be reassigned, eh, the program. Ten thousand we have? We already have an amount, eh, in actuals are always a bit less, so there's some flexibility. And we need to take some, some money from the grant money budget to bump up the program. To answer your question, does that answer your question? Do you need a motion for that, or do we rate for the motion from, for the recommendation from staff? For right now, we would, eh, recommend you maintain the sum, amount in the reserve. If it's five thousand, add, eh, to, you have to add, eh, eh, minor hockey would, eh, that would be twenty-three thousand. Then we'll deduct the amount from the grant coming for, over the year. As we did with the policy that was revised, we presented at the start of the, this year. And what we did is the, the, what was left over, that we couldn't have, eh, provided in the, eh, the, the donation application, we would have sought it, we, we would have, eh, found it in your budget. The last item is for another question before that, in terms of the grant, we have access to it as well. All residents, eh, with, with young people. All residents, with, with young people. Is it, has, does it have to be an activity run by the town of Shadiaq? No. Thank you. The interpreter apologizes, there was quite a few inaudible bits there. There are some activities that don't exist within the borders of the town of Shadiaq. I'm often, often using the analogy, well, there's no pool. So if you want to go swimming, where do they go? They might go to Moncton, they might go to Riverview. I'm just raising that point. So the last point is access to water that Councilor Cormier had brought forward. Obviously, evidently, I know that there was some steps taken in the past, it was bring back the file.
On this issue, if we have additional requests, if it might lead to a construction, acquisition, or more serious investment, obviously, we still have a reserve that we can dip in. A surplus second year, could be a special project. So we have some avenues to explore. We don't have an exact amount that we can put in. We have to look at the issue more deeply, but I think we can comfortably figure about fifty thousand to get started and move this ahead. That issue, if memory serves, at the last meeting of the council, we talked about two hundred grand. It seemed to say that we could do this within the budget, but I'm okay with fifty grand. And this, I know a surplus is coming, the goal of putting this in the budget, as a council, I want to show to citizens. And I'm just speaking for myself, but it's important to have access to water. It's important to show citizens that I'm committed to trying to find possibilities of access to water. If we put this in the budget, it shows citizens that at least they're serious, they're trying to. If we find them, that's another question, but the commitment with the budget is that the the Shadiaq Municipal Council is ready to invest some money for access to water. So I'm okay with fifty grand, yeah. And the two hundred grand is now unaffected in the budget, so we take the fifty in there. And maybe have a feeling, maybe the council would see a bigger decrease. So, in the event that the council wanted to go, the third option to reduce three cents. That two hundred grand should be used to, to fill that difference of one on five cents, two cents, we could find the fifty thousand, but we have, we would have to make some modification so we don't affect other services. Thank you for the precision. Did we cover your list? Question? Suggestion? On the line? Very small. So playground, and I would put parks, because I missed she said fifty thousand on the last one, but it's hard to follow. As René said, that two or five, as I've said, will take the two, the fifty, will take out the two or five grand. Maybe there'll be some, maybe left. So, I would like to show that it's on the list anyway. No question. So, so we talked about a lot of expenses. Impressions of tax rates and what we would like to see, or less. The motion to the budget is based on the recommendation of the staff. Increasing five cents, former LSDs, half, a cent and a half in the old Shadiaq. We're finished with deliberation, are we? Can we put this on the table and debate or, or? For that, or? If we had a request to adjust versus what was recommended by management, we could make an amendment, et cetera. You know, three cents and we'll, we'll adjust. Or two cents, or five cents, or whatever. So, we proceed. So, and we need somebody to make a motion.
Six point one, Vile de Chediaque budget twenty twenty-five.
It's been resolved that Town of Shadiaq Municipal Council adopts an overall operating budget for twenty-five in the amount of twenty-five thousand, twenty-five million, three thirty-two, nine one three. And that twenty-two million, five seventy-three three eight, given municipalities, made for twenty twenty-five. It also resolved that the tax rate be one point four three three four for Shadiaq and zero point seven nine four two Shadiaq, Shadiaq Parish. Zero point eight six seven nine for Shadiaq Skidok Road. Uh, zero eight one nine six for Shadiaq Portion, Shadiaq Cape. Zero point five oh eight one for the LSDs of Skidok Road, Shadiaq Cape. Zero point five three two one for LSD Pointe du Chen. So be it finally resolved that council orders and directives by the Minister of Local Government on the assessment of residential properties which are taxable under the Assessment Act and located within town boundaries. Moved by Depris. Seconded by Boudreau. Question? He said we could do a debate. If the management, you know, if they're comfortable to, to set it at three, I would go down to three. But if, if you say that we can't find the other sums of money, down to one point five, two down to, to three, I'd like to see three. They say they might be able to find it. Question the difference between the end column and, and the, you know, the difference of one point five. You see at the bottom, a hundred ninety, ninety-five thousand. That would be the amount to be found within the budget to, to go to three cents reduction. So we should, so you move a reduction of three cents instead of one point five. So I have an amendment on the table to reduce to three cents. Is somebody second? As in which, Chris King, the amendment, move the second in the amendment. So we'll vote on the amendment. We'll vote the amendment and then we'll come back to the bigger resolution. So we'll vote twice. Certainly question on the amendment that's proposed, down to three cents. Maybe limited debate. The idea is to go from one point five to three cents. On the amendment, in the initial proposition, we reduced it over four years to get to the threshold of of parity. If we accept the amendment of three cents, how will that affect the next few years? There'll be no reductions in subsequent years, or? We presented today, based on services we have, fair share. Fair rate, the sixty, sixty cents. It means for all Shadiaq, but go down nine cents. We take three, four years to get to the fair rate. Taxing authorities. Either we can get there faster or, or make smaller reductions over the years, over year three, year four. We proposed a slight reduction, but the council can, can see up to three cents. And we will get to the same point either faster or slower. So in the plan, they, they planned for one point five for twenty, twenty twenty-five, then to use a three, and the other year, a three also. So we could inverse the order, if you will. By doing three cents, where do we think we'll have to, to poll on the, on the rains? Well, he indicated, I can tell you right away, if we have to find a hundred ninety, ninety-seven grand, we've already taken fifty for access to water. There's a hundred and fifty left that we could dip in. So the lack of forty-five grand, where would we get it? At first meeting, we talked about a reduction of wages or adoption of we've made the real calculation, about a hundred grand, about fifty grand, the real amount we would need for the wind time adjustment to put everybody at sandwich scale. So that's why we say we're able to get there. We would remove a reserve that we had in the maximum, the amount, that non-affected amounts would be less, that simple. Did we talk about what we want to do with the reserve? It is there. We, obviously, we had two hundred grand, non-affected. We thought, or, you know, you know, the announcement of a school that should be coming, engineering for a road and access, we had an amount that we felt that if something came along, we could meet that need. If there's a school and we had to do engineering, well, I'd find it also in the budget. I can, we'll have a secondary surplus of seven ninety grand transferred reserve. So we have practically up to eight hundred grand, non-affected, where we could do a transfer from. We'll transfer a bit less. So, question on the amendment? You know, reduce next year. You know, to get to the shared amount. It'll take three, four years to get there. So, at the same time there, if the next year there are services, we have a creative center, maybe we'll need to increase it compared to the reduction. So it's possible that there won't be reductions the next few years. That citizens will not see. But since twenty-three, we have only ten years to make the adjustment. After that, we can't do any adjustment for the fair share. We have to reach that fair share within ten years. And we've already been three years into it. I understand, but we don't know where we're getting, where we're going with the recenter. Your point is, is valid. That's why we recommended one point five. The recenter, if you decide to move ahead with that, it could be additional investment and adjustments needed to the budget and to the shared rate. We're comfortable with one point five. Three cents, we show you we're able to, but can we maintain that with the recenter? We can't answer that question because the recenter is, is it gonna cost thirty million or three hundred million? They're just going wide, but we have no idea. We've resolved to do a business case for the project. We will undertake that study to bring back to the council how much it costs, the options, what the design will look like and so on, then the council will make a decision. And then we can start knocking on doors. Do we have funders? I want, if the price is a hundred million and the best deal is federal twenty-five million, we'd be on the hook for twenty seventy-five million. So, the we is, we would do, would do, would need to do a, with the funding campaign, how much time would it take? These are all issues. That's not expertise we have internally. So we have to look at different partners with a project of that size. But money, there will always be some. Was it the right time, the right amount? And what can we absorb for our residents? I think one ninety-seven, since I've been here, I'll be confident that we could do that. So question on the amendment? I would support it to one point five, but not the three. As he explained, we don't know where we'll be going the next three years, so I'm more comfortable for leaving it there at one point five. Question? I prefer, I would like to go three, five, or ten, but I think if we go too low in a year or two from now, and tell people we have to increase, it'd be worse than if we go down too much and then forced to go back up next year. And we know the evaluation assessment will be higher, bring in more. Maybe next year we go to three. So on the amendment of reduction three cents instead of what the motion had, so which year raised hand? So, so all those in favor of a three cent reduction, raise your hand. Three, four, against the rest. Thank you. Sure to come back to initial motion, one point five. All those in favor, raise your hand. Against? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Good argument. At six point two. So, water services. Water Utility Operating Fund twenty twenty-five, whereas under section one seventeen four of the Local Government Act, the Municipal Shadiaq Water Utility Operating Fund for the year twenty twenty-five shall consist of revenues of two million three hundred eighty-seven thousand four four two and expenditures and expenditures of two million, three hundred eighty-seven, four four two. Get resolved also that under section one of bylaw stated there, a bylaw relating the collection of water system user charges, that the per unit user charge for municipal water be three sixty-five for the year twenty-twenty-five, and that a discount of thirty-four dollars be granted as long as the user pays his bill on or before March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and that the other charges be similar to the latest resolution and amendments to the said bylaw. So moved? Moved and seconded, question? I've already said the deliberation. I know, I'm not a consumer, missed that part. I don't think that we are correct by freezing the rate on water. We see the debt on water, the next five years will be increasing drastically. We don't have a solution, not yet. And how address that situation? I mentioned that to the manager in private, that I was reluctant to. So I would, and I've told you in the last year, that I would bring in a motion to look at the situation for water. I know Councilor Brou was worried, and I myself, that many people don't pay their invoices, and those who pay are subsidizing those who don't. I don't think that's correct. So I think they, I hope the council will have an action plan later. But for this presentation here, I would not be responsible by saying yes to the same rate presented here. I would not be responsible by saying yes because the indebtedness, indebtedness rate is increasing, and we don't have a plan to find a solution. So thank you. I'll just note, in twenty-twenty-five, the rate, twenty-two point seven percent, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. It may not be for this budget that it be adjustment, but the need may be more assertive in twenty-six. Is there any question? I'd like to. We haven't finished voting on the motion, she's. And I'm sure she said no more questions, or what? So on the motion to set the rate on, all those in favor, say aye. Against, contrary minded, they, two, two nays, adopted. So. I just need a motion to adjourn. Can I share a comment? I would like to say a few words about deliberations, like we had this year, an observation I made, and I need, I want to mention it. What I saw today. You really have your department at heart. We can see that, your workers, you're doing the best for citizens, and thank you for that. Thank you, we put you on the spot, we asked you. It's a difficult question, we don't want, but it was remarkable. I well prepared the work, and now you know well. Your issues, it's nice to see you having your department really at heart. You know, I really care, and to make sure you have the funds. So a big thank you for that, also, Carol. I think the best experience so far this year, thank you. I didn't understand at first, you know, there was zero was missing, but, but it's part of the job that I like to miss, but thank you very much for the work you did. I really like the experience, and it was enriching experience, and I learned a lot. So I want to thank management for all the work they did because, you know, it was a smooth deliberation, so thank you. So you move adjournment? So moved, thank you very much.